Well, go ahead and call to order our June 12th, 2025 City Council Meeting for the City of Longview. I'd like to note that Mr. Jody Berryhill is here tonight with us virtually. Hey, Jody. Looks like he can hear us. So we'll just, this is our reminder that we'll need to vote by show of hands tonight. And Mr. Berryhill, if you'd like to make a comment, if you'll kind of wave at me, I will recognize you for that at that time. We'll start first with our invocation and pledge. That will be led by Kenny Hawthorne. On behalf of Longview Christian Church, for many years, Longview Christian Church has assisted with repairs and cleanups at many Longview homes for our residents in need throughout our community. These projects have been identified and are now identified through our Connect to Longview program, and I understand that they are quite the expert in helping prepare and get ready for those projects. Kenny is also helping us create training materials that we can utilize and take advantage of for all of our volunteers in looking at those projects. So we're very grateful for you and all your years of service and expertise.
My pleasure.
If you would please rise.
If you would join me as we pray. Father God, we are thankful that we live in a country that's free. We give you thanks for our nation. We pray for our national leaders. We give you thanks for the state of Texas and for our state leaders, and we also thank you for our community, for Longview, and for these leaders. And we pray for them specifically, Father, that you give them wisdom and discernment and courage, and that we would act in a way and conduct ourselves so that we would bring you honor and glory. Pray for our time together. Please bless it in Jesus' name. Amen. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a presentation regarding our GLOW, Greater Longview Optimal Wellness Community Partner, Christus Good Shepherd. And I will turn that over to Mr. Sidney Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it. Tonight, we have Jamie Brogan. I guess that's B-R-O-G-A-N. Is that correct? All right. Thank you. Vice President of Mission, Integration, and Amy Cockrell. Would that be right? Yes. Director of Quality Management for Christus System. Christmas Hospital Systems? How do you say that? Just Christus?
Christus.
Christus.
Christus Good Shepherd Health System.
Christus Good Shepherd Health System. All right. Thank you. They will be, well, it's in the next sentence. They will be presenting about Christus Good Shepherd Health Center and how they work with GLOW, which is the Greater Longview Optimal Wellness, which coordinates, I guess y'all explain to that what you really do. Okay. All right.
Amy will take the GLOW part.
Which coordinates to better serve our community. Christus is a founding member and has been instrumental in developing the programs. Now, we've had several presentations on different GLOW members. We appreciate having y'all here. Thank you. All right.
Thank you. So we're grateful. Thank you for this opportunity to present to y'all tonight. We're going to just talk a little bit about who we are and how we serve this community and grateful for the time. So just a little bit. So our mission, Christus Health was founded 150 years ago to extend the healing ministry of Jesus Christ. Bishop Claude Marie DeBowie, who's on the left, he was the second Catholic bishop here, and there was a need for healthcare. The wealthy would hire doctors to come to their homes, but the poor had no one to care for them. So he called, we'll call it our first nursing recruiting, and he recruited some young women from France who were nurses and became Catholic religious sisters. And he used the words you see on the screen there. Our Lord Jesus Christ, "suffering in the persons of a multitude of sick and infirm of every kind seeks relief at your hands." So they came in 1866 and founded Texas's first private hospital and first Catholic hospital in Galveston. Our mission to extend the healing ministry of Jesus Christ is we live that out each day by, according to those, our five core values, which you see up on the screen. Those are dignity, integrity, excellence, stewardship, and compassion. And we give a definition of that, and we give three ways to live that out on the screen. And it's my role, the mission integration role, which people usually, when I meet them, say, "What in the heck is that?" It's my role to introduce people to our mission and our core values and help them live it out, whether they're at the bedside, or they're on a computer in a back room supporting our healthcare staff. So I want to just talk a little bit about communities we serve. So we are actually an international Catholic healthcare system in four states and four countries, including Mexico, Chile, and Colombia. We have over 60,000 providers and associates serving in those communities. And here locally, up on the screen, you see, that's our primary service area, and that's defined as the ZIP codes where 80% of our patients reside. And so you can see the different counties and ZIP codes included. So Amy's going to talk about some of our key service areas.
Yeah, so just an overview of our key services. So you can see here on the screen for calendar year 2024, we were able to see over 18,000 inpatients, and this is looking just at Good Shepherd. We had over 124,000 ER visits, over 14,000 surgeries, over 1,000 births at our hospital, and almost half a million outpatient encounters. And then you can see on the other side of the screen, the specific designations, stroke center, advanced hip and knee center, our maternal and neonatal designations, our NICU designations, our trauma designations. So it's a variety and large scope of services that we're able to offer. And then investing in our community. So looking forward, we were just able to open earlier this year our ambulatory cath labs. And then we are ramping up to open our Henderson Emergency Department in, I think, the end of July is when that's slated to open. And then, of course, we've already broke ground on our cancer center. So over $58 million worth of capital investments that are currently occurring in our communities.
So our service to the community comes out of that calling, whatsoever we do to the
least of our brothers and sisters. It's commonly used in healthcare parlance, talking about health equity. How do we ensure that all receive the care that they given? So for Christus, we count that in terms of charity care and community benefit. So on the screen, on the left side, those are charity care figures just for Christus Good Shepherd. So we're around $35 million to $40 million, and that's across Longview and Marshall. The bulk of that occurs in Longview. On the right side, we want to point out about a year and a half ago, the Loan Institute, which was actually trying to point out not-for-profit healthcare systems that don't live up to their tax benefit, found Christus Health to be the third-best provider of community benefit in the United States. We're really proud of that statistic. Just some awareness, this is the time of year I send out to our community partners and area pastors, information on our financial assistance policies, so to help overcome financial obstacles to care. So Christus Health will cover healthcare costs for uninsured persons making up to 300% the federal poverty level, and then will cover a prorated amount up to 400%. So there's resources on our website in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. So how do we know what are the greatest needs? Every three years, as part of our commitment as a not-for-profit hospital, we conduct a community health needs assessment. On the screen are the current health needs, which actually end the end of June, and you see those on the screen. And those of you that have been involved in a community health activity, usually we're looking at one of these activities to promote in the community. And will be, our new community health needs assessment date will be out later this summer in the fall. So we're going to talk about some of that outreach right now.
So I'm going to go through this very quickly, but I do want to point out our other allied health programs and outreach that we provide and planning for the future. So Christus Good Shepherd, we have partnerships with 18 ISDs, 19 colleges, and we offer allied health programs, student shadowing to over 600 students that come through our campus to shadow, to go through our PCT programs. And we've seen significant growth in those opportunities as we look to the future and who will be providing care in our communities in the future. And then this is just areas that we're also expanding into as part of that allied health program. And I can give this to you.
Yeah, so this is, so this is some of our outreach into the community. So how do we make a dent in health, heart health, or obesity? We try to reach members of our community that we don't normally reach through some of the community events. So you'll see Juneteenth with this coming up this weekend, and we'll be here in Longview and in Marshall and in Jefferson the Saturday after. On the right side, we have a, we're grateful to have a new mammography, mobile mammography bus, and now we have the ability to provide state-of-the-art 3D mobile imaging to women in need. Our MAMO bus team has been at Your Best Care Day back in April, and they're at most of our community events. We're part of Homeless Resource Day, sponsored by the city every year. That's one of our, one of our best events in terms of reaching people in need, and we were grateful to be part of the Mental Health Summit last year.
Yeah. Specifically to GLOW, I did want to highlight, we just provided a new batch of data for our research partners in the program. But through calendar year '24, we have had touchpoints with 154 community members that have been enrolled in the GLOW program. And for those 154 community members, that totaled 1,900, over 1,900 encounters through our emergency department and/or inpatient units. And that spanned from individuals in the community that might have only visited us one time to an individual in the community that has visited us 97 times. So we continue to work with our GLOW program, our GLOW partners, to help reach these patients and just facilitate them in the best way that we can to reach their needs. Athletic partners, so again, looking at how we're partnering throughout the community, we are working with approximately 25 school districts around East Texas and providing orthopedic services through athletic training partnerships with these campuses. And then, of course, affectionately known as Mater, we have our mobile athletic training room that we are able to take directly to the field and provide services and care. We have mobile MRI capabilities through this to our students and athletes. And then one of the things that we're excited about that's brand-new is that we have been able to provide a partnership with the Longview Fire Department and provide a master's-level athletic trainer that will provide resources and partnership specifically for our Longview Fire Department.
So I want to talk a little bit about leveraging resources. So our system office maintains what's known as the Christus Community Impact Fund, which we call the Christus Fund, and it provides us about $250,000 to $300,000 in local grants to community partners who are addressing some of those priority health needs that you saw on the prior slide. So this is a picture of the ceremony, blessing of hand ceremony, we had last September. In terms of local partners, there's Buckner, there's Newgate, East Texas Women's Center, and also Asbury House, where in our Longview community. Prior recipients, we helped fund the East Texas Food Bank Community Resource Center in South Longview. And also, this one's in Marshall, but we put it up here because this was one that's garnered a lot of interest. It's a remote food locker in partnership with Mission Marshall. So it allows them to distribute food outside of their normal food pantry hours. It allows people to come receive food discreetly, so they don't have to stand in line at the mission. And you basically order ahead, program it in, and then you come pick it up. It's a refrigerated unit. That one's at our Life Center. They've also put one in at Wiley College as well. So that's what we have tonight. If we want to thank everybody for the time, and any questions?
Any questions? Perfect. Thank you guys so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next on our agenda is citizen comment. I do have one speaker card from Ruben Juarez. You would come on up and give us your name and address, and then you've got three minutes, and I will pass around your photos.
Thank you. My name is Ruben Juarez. I live here in Town Lake Village. I want to thank you for your time. Just wanted you to see that information we brought you, and I'd like to extend an invitation on Town Lake Village's behalf to come down and join us at your convenience sometime during this summer, if you have time. And it's mainly about kicking Guthrie Creek one more time. Keep working on it. It's still flooding us out, and we just need to address it again. Mr. Archer has been a big help. Mr. Proto, when he was here, also helped us. And yep, just here to ask for you to come join us. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Allen, I will ask to be in touch with you, and then it sounds like you know Mr. Archer as well.
Thank you so much.
Follow-up with you. Thank you so much for being here. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any questions or items that council would like to pull off for further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to pull off Jay.
Jay? And did you have something, Mr. Allen?
Oh, I just wanted to bring one thing, just a comment to attention. We've got item E, there's a $300,000, we're applying for a $300,000 grant. Item F, we're applying for a $500,000 grant. I just want to thank Ms. Laura that applies for these. I mean, there's a world of money out there. You just have to know how to apply for it.
Absolutely. We appreciate you, Ms. Allen. Item J is consider a resolution authorizing an agreement with LeadCo for funding, design, and construction of two pickleball courts at McWhorter Park. Do you have any specific questions?
Yeah, I just want to, I'm excited about beautiful McWhorter Park and the, appreciate Mr. Albertson and Mr. Archer. Can you kind of just, and LeadCo for Wayne Mansfield, LeadCo for the funding? Can you kind of, I just would like a, let everyone know the description of the process and what the plans are for the pickleball court, please?
Right. Yeah, so this will be installing two courts and the lighting, and we are very thankful to LeadCo for their funding and their help in making sure this happens. But that'll be installed there. We're looking at opening bids probably, you know, middle of summer, and then it'll probably take a year for construction. So it should be open next year, and we're excited for it, and we're really, like I said, thankful to LeadCo for it, providing the funding.
I appreciate you, Mr. Archer, and all you pickleball enthusiasts in Longview.
Yeah.
Got a new spot coming next summer. Come on out to McWhorter Park.
That's it.
Bring your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Any other items on the consent agenda, or do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate with raise of hand. Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Thank you so much. Next up is our zoning item. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 2514 filed by the City of Longview. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and Mr. McPhee. So city staff is requesting a rezone of the property seen here on this map, from heavy commercial seen in the red to single-family five zoning district located along Cleardale Drive and Meadowview Drive, as seen on this aerial that I'll get to. There are several existing single-family homes in this neighborhood. The current UDC does not permit single-family homes in this heavy commercial zoning district. Therefore, these properties are considered non-conforming. In order to correct this, staff is requesting a rezone of these properties to bring them in compliance with zoning. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This item does require a public hearing, which I will open at this time. Are there any questions for Ms. Choi? I have no speaker cards. Are there any citizens that would like to comment on this zoning item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate with raise of hand. Sorry, got to raise your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We will move on to our action items. First up is probably why everybody is here. Thank you, guys, for being here. Consider a resolution approving the city manager's recommendation for our new Longview Fire Chief, Mr. Rollin McPhee.
Mayor Ishihara and members of council, it's certainly my honor to bring this conversation and this recommendation to each of you tonight. But before I bring forward that recommendation, I really want to begin by recognizing and expressing my sincere gratitude to interim Fire Chief Andy Parker. Chief Parker, when the department needed leadership, you stepped up without hesitation. You made it clear from the outset that you weren't seeking the position permanently. Instead, you wanted to make sure you brought us steady, professional guidance during a time of transition. I'm personally incredibly thankful for your service to both the department and the men and women of the Longview Fire Department and to the City of Longview. He's earned our respect, our appreciation, and I'm grateful he will continue to serve as resident, as assistant chief moving forward. Following a national search in a thorough, multi-step evaluation process, I am pleased to recommend Greg Grimes as appointment, for appointment as the next Fire Chief of Longview. City council and mayor, from the earliest stages of the recruitment process, both Maryann and I believed Greg Grimes stood out as our frontrunner. In fact, he was my number-one pick. His background, his leadership experience, and his approach to modern fire service matched our local priorities in Longview, Texas. As the process continued through staff rankings, written evaluations, interviews, and engagement with department personnel, each step confirmed that initial impression. Chief Grimes most recently served as the Assistant Chief of Operations for the Allen Fire Department, where he oversaw public education, EMS, emergency response, and training, and managed a $20 million budget with more than 100 personnel under his leadership. With more than 25 years in the fire service and a master's degree in occupational safety, he brings both a strong operational record and a clear commitment to professional development. His selection was also backed by unanimous panel recommendation and strong support from department personnel who participated in the interview and the meet-and-greet process. Thank you all for being here tonight. Mayor, council, thank you for your support of my efforts and our efforts during this search, and I respectfully submit Greg Grimes for your approval as the next Fire Chief for the City of Longview.
Thank you so much, Mr. McPhee. I would first like to echo your comments to Chief Parker. Chief, we love you, and we're so grateful for all that you've done. You've been a leader in the Fire Department for more than a decade, and we can't thank you enough for your sacrifice. We would be in a world of hurt without you, so we appreciate you so much. Chief Grimes, we're excited to have you and your lovely wife, Angie. It's a pleasure to meet you, and as you can see, we are excited and expectant, and you will have a world of support from our amazing Fire Department, which is not only the first in the state of Texas, but the first in the nation. We're very proud of all of them and all that they do. Does anyone have questions or comments or anything before we vote? Okay, after we vote, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's so hard. Go ahead, Jody.
Hey, first off, I want to say I appreciate so much having the opportunity to talk with Andy during the time that we went through this as director. I felt like he provided me with a lot of information when we started out, but then also, Rollin, the job you did, the way you described it, the interview process and all, I feel confident in the person we chose. I can't wait to meet Chief Grimes. I'm going to go ahead and say that early, because I'm excited. I think he's going to bring something very positive to Longview, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to work with him.
Thank you so much, Greg, Mr. Conley.
I just want to echo what you said earlier, and you just see, what I've seen, what I've noticed in this, my time in Longview and in this position, is our Fire Department seems very unified, and you see this, and I appreciate everybody that's in the room and what they do every day to keep our city safe.
Yep. So we're going to vote, and after we do, I'd like to invite all of our Longview Fire Department individuals to come up and take a photo. I think it's exciting how much support we have already shown for you, and I want you to know that's what you can expect from your council, from your city admin, and from your Fire Department. I'll also ask Chief Kemper to come on up, Billy to come on up, and then council to join us. We're going to take a picture all together, and Angie, of course, you too. So if I can, I would like to have a motion to approve our recommendation from the city manager.
I'd like to make a motion.
I have a motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate with raise of hand. Any opposed? Congratulations, Chief Grimes. We're glad to welcome you. Come on up. Come on, you two. Come on up. You guys should probably see him right there. We're just filling around here.
Angie, right one. Jacket in there, too.
Wherever you want with you. You're right here.
Hi, Tom.
Yes, I'm in the high end. Okay. You got it? Yeah. Three, two, one, smile. Sarah in there? So. Okay. You guys. Three, two, one, smile. Sarah in there? So. Okay. All right. Thank you. Right. We will move on to items of community interest. Mr. Conley, you're up first.
Yes, I wanted to, last, at the last city council meeting, we had, we left here and we went to, I was happy to go to the Pine Tree, a crowded Pine Tree Stadium, watched over 400 students walk across the stage. Good luck to them, and this is a picture of them in interaction with the, they do a senior walk with all the campuses, and then I go back to the other pictures. This is what's happening now. It's at our primary, the kindergartners, and there's some high school volunteers. Summer learning is continuing, so the show goes on, and good luck to our graduates.
We will move on to items of community interest.
Yes, I wanted to, at the last city council meeting, we had, we left here and we went to, I was happy to go to the Pine Tree, a crowded Pine Tree Stadium, watched over 400 students walk across the stage. Good luck to them, and this is a picture of them in interaction with the, they do a senior walk with all the campuses, and then I go back to the other pictures. This is what's happening now. It's at our primary, the kindergartners, and there's some high school volunteers. Summer learning is continuing, so the show goes on, and good luck to our graduates. And I want to make an announcement, sorry, I didn't have this on the screen, but really appreciate Pine Tree ISD, and I would like the entire community to know that all children will be fed for free at Pine Tree during the summer months. And it's at each campus. The hours are, or the days right now at the primary, at Birch Middle School, and the high school, from June 2nd to June 26th, breakfast and lunch, 7:30 to 8 for breakfast, and 11 to 11:30 for lunch. And then in the month of July, at the high school, July 7th to July 31st, breakfast 8 to 8:45, lunch 10:45 to 12:30. Again, any child, one thing about I've noticed in school, we have a lot of kids in poverty in our community, and if you have a way to get a child to those locations or need more information, please contact me. I'd love to help you and make sure we get kids fed. Thank you.
Ms. Moore?
Yes. Thank you. So this past weekend, we kind of kicked off Juneteenth celebration. This is pictures from our East Texas Juneteenth pageant. As you can see, these are some of our winners. We had the Teeny Miss, Junior Miss, Junior's Juneteenth. I think I cried just as much as she cried while she was getting it, but it was very, very good, and we enjoyed it. I want to thank Donita Means, who organized that, and it was just the effort of the community and the Juneteenth Committee, so I want to thank them for that. Then coming up Friday, we have our Street Jam. The Street Jam is something that we used to do a long time ago. Don't want to say how old I am, but it was when I was younger, and so we'll bring you that back, and it will be from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Along with the Street Jam, it's targeted for kids to kind of enjoy themselves and kind of set free for the summer. And then it'll be a kickball tournament that is family geared, so families against families at the kickball tournament, and there'll be food vendors there as well. On the 20th, Friday the 20th, we'll have our first annual NAACP Juneteenth Freedom Celebration at the Longview Museum of Fine Arts. This is also a free event. It is hosted by the NAACP, co-sponsored by the City of Longview. We're very excited about that. That event is an all-black or African attire event, and it will be from 7:00 PM to midnight. Then on the 21st, we have our first Praise on the Plaza, which the committee, the Juneteenth Committee did that as well, and I'm very excited about that. So we'll have gospel singers. I cannot see all those names, since I would read them for you, but I can't. But it is on Saturday, June 21st, at 4:00 PM, and there will be food vendors there as well, and this is also a free event. Thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to echo all of the sentiments that Councilwoman Moore mentioned about Juneteenth celebrations. There's an array of events happening over the next week, two weeks, that everyone can have an opportunity to get involved in. And so thanks to that committee and everyone that's gotten involved to organize those and prepare those for our community. And then next, I'd like to, once again, welcome Chief Grimes to Longview. We look forward to working with you here. The FD is always one of my favorites, so it's a pleasure to meet you, sir, and I'm always hitting up the closet for gear, so look for me to be around. And you finally get some good football, not that Allen football here in Longview. That's it, Mayor.
Mr. Neustead.
Yes, I just want to echo, thank you to all the Fire Department during this transition and the support through it. Chief Parker, thank you for everything you've done, and then Chief Grimes and your lovely family, we're welcoming you to Longview. Thank you. That's all, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Berryhill.
Yes, what about Garrett Methvin and the Spring Hill Panthers? Quitting the state championship. A lot of people don't realize all the work that goes into it and the sacrifice from families, the hard work that I know Coach Methvin asks of his kids. And I'm telling you, you talk about a quality Christian man that's leading that group of kids, it's Garrett Methvin. And the people at Spring Hill are fortunate to have him, and what they did this year is just amazing. I can't wait till we celebrate them. I believe we've got a water tower that's shining blue and white, is what I've been told. I had to leave town, which, by the way, I don't like doing Zoom. I'd rather be there. But again, congratulations to the whole Spring Hill ISD School District and what they did. Coach Methvin and all the boys, walk proud. We're proud of you.
That's great. Did you have something you want to add, Mr. Conley?
I just wanted to add that Jody Berryhill did hire Garrett Methvin at Pine Tree. He's a former pirate, so once a pirate, always a pirate. Jody didn't say that, but Jody did hire him at one point.
All right, Mr. Allen, you're up.
Yes, yes. Thank you. First, we need to try to stay dry. I mean, we've got a lot of rain. It's caused some flooding, and it's caused a lot of streams to get out of their banks. And we will do the best to do what we can to alleviate some of these situations, but it's just, it's just been a wet couple of weeks here, and we understand that. On the, well, here I am leaning back. On the Fire Department, Chief Grimes, we have a wonderful, wonderful Fire Department, and I'm sure you're going to enjoy your time with them. We're looking forward to your leadership in keeping them on the same course they're on now and moving them up. And I think you'll really enjoy being here. Longview is a wonderful community. We all support you, and just want to say thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I would ask, Mr. Berryhill, go ahead.
Hey, I know I'm not there, and I know there's been a lot of rain, but I'm telling you, sun is shining on Spring Hill right now, Sydney. I'm sorry.
Before I do my community announcements, if council and Mr. Berryhill, if you guys can stay for five minutes, we're going to have our safety training with Officers Dotson and Bray, so if you guys will just hang out after we're done for five minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped you, Mr. McPhee. Go for it.
So first off, before I say one other thing, I want to actually thank Councilman Ray Wade. And you challenged us last year with the concern you had urging residents to stop firing guns in the wear as a way to celebrate holidays. And that campaign, which actually ran for New Year's and was put together by our Longview Police Department team and our Communication Division, was recognized statewide last week with the statewide award of excellence.
Well, I just heard about this.
Because it's because of you that they got this award. We will continue to share that messaging in these days and weeks leading up to the holidays like July 4th, when we see this behavior occur. So remember, firing guns is illegal and dangerous.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I know. I should have got mayor recognition, everything else.
You're an award winner.
I know.
And the second thing I'd like to thank council for, I know this has been a long search to find the replacement Fire Chief, and I am sincerely appreciative of the support that each and every one of you gave me during this process, and I'm happy to have you here, Chief Grimes.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, my items. Juneteenth, city offices will be closed Thursday, June 19th, although your sanitation, as always, will be collected on its regular schedule. The June 14th events, the parade and festival, I believe the parade begins at 10:00, and the festival at noon will be held rain or shine, so please come out and see us on Saturday and join us June 19th for Juneteenth in the park at Teague Park. July 4th announcements, we are announcing tonight that the free concert will be opened by Devin Michaels and headlined by Glenn Templeton at our July 4th event. Fireworks start at 9:30, and you can join us on 10:00, at 10:00 AM on Thursday, June 26th, for a news conference that kicks off that July 4th, 2026 celebration as we celebrate America's 250th anniversary. So July 4th is always a great time. Please make plans to join us for that. And as I'm sure you've noticed, the Great Texas Balloon Race is happening this week. They've unfortunately had some bad weather, but their events will hopefully take place this weekend, so please join them Friday, Saturday. Special shapes happening tomorrow morning, but you can check out that calendar. It is one thing that makes Longview very special and unique, and we appreciate everything that the balloon race does for us, so please make sure to participate. And with that, we will be adjourned and stay for our safety moment, but everybody else is adjourned. Thank you so much.